We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Roll call, please, Renata.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Yo.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Eddinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Okay, we'll rise for invocation Pastor Jim Williams from the Emmanuel Baptist Church.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Gracious Heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for all the many and abundant blessings you provide us. Thank you for your freedom you provide this nation. Father, you tell us in your word that we as citizens ought to obey the governing authorities because you provide them and you give them us these authorities to provide peace and order and justice for us, Father. And so we, tonight, I'd like to pray for the mayor, Lord, and all the city officials here tonight. And I especially like to pray for this council, Lord. I pray that you grant them wisdom and discernment to govern amidst a time where interests differ from one another, Father. And I pray that you just be with them as they go through the agenda tonight, that you just help them to know and discern what's right for your eyes and what's right for us people who live and work in the beloved city of Coeur d'Alene. In Jesus' precious name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Steve, ladies and the plats, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started on official business tonight, we do have a birthday tonight. Councilman Amy Evans is 23, 24, 23. So we will sing happy birthday to Amy.
Really? I think a motion.
And Dan, you will start us off.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Amy. Happy birthday to you.
And now the spanking. Now the spanking, that's good. Okay, well, get on to business here. Amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments? Don't see any amendments to the agenda. We will have a presentation, our first presentation tonight is from Tammy Jaeger, who is the Public Sector Services Manager for Waste Management, is going to talk about recycling.
Oh, that waste.
Happy birthday, Councilman Evans. Mr. Mayor, council and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I am the Public Sector Services Manager and I also have a team with me from Waste Management, several gentlemen in the audience. Two that I'd like to point out are Mr. Steve Roberg, a fixture in the community, he's the district manager for Waste Management of Idaho. Also, Mr. Michael Rang is here. He is our area recycling manager and responsible for overseeing our material recovery facilities in the Pacific Northwest. So, happy to have them here and they'll be here to answer questions as needed. So I'll go ahead and run through a brief presentation and then ask them to join me. Waste Management, as many know, is located in Coeur d'Alene on Manufacturing Way. We started providing garbage collection service in Coeur d'Alene in 1981 and curbside recycling in 1993. From 1993 through 2009, recycling was done in, using bins where we sorted each category of material and then collected them in the trucks. In October of 2010, we were able to help Coeur d'Alene transition into a single-stream recycling or blue cart system. And single-stream recycling is where all of the recyclables materials are placed unsorted into a single cart for collection and then we later sort them out at our regional recycling center. With the origin of curbside recycling, about 28% of residents place their bins out for collection on collection day. With the introduction of the single-stream recycling program, 75% of customers place their carts out on collection day. It's over 150% increase in participation. So we know that single-stream recycling works and the reason that it works is because it's so simple. Single-stream recycling also increased the volumes of material that we collected in Coeur d'Alene by over 100%. In 2009, we were collecting about 1,092 tons. In the year 2011, after the single-stream program was implemented, we doubled that amount and we're on course to meet 5 million pounds by the end of this year, so about 2,500 tons. So people might be interested to know where your recyclables go. From Coeur d'Alene, they go to our material recovery facility, which is located in Spokane. It's a state-of-the-art facility with sorting equipment and technology along with dedicated people to separate the recyclables into marketable materials. This particular facility processes 6,000 tons of recyclable materials per month from businesses and residences in the inland northwest. Recyclables from the Spokane Material and Recycling Technology Center, which we call SMART for short, are shipped to a variety of mills for reuse and remanufacturing into new products. In the second quarter of this year, over 70% of old newspaper was shipped to domestic mills and they were sold at a premium price. This is great news for Waste Management. We also sell old newspaper, cardboard, and office paper to 10 domestic mills, so mills in the United States. Several are located in the Pacific Northwest. And I have an example here, this is a package made especially to ship wine bottles, which is a popular thing to do in the Pacific Northwest. And it's made actually in, by a facility in Wenatchee, Washington. And the example is 60% old cardboard, 20% or no, 60% newspaper, 20% cardboard, 20% office pack, so office paper. And this is 100% recycled, so kind of a neat thing made relatively locally. So we do have a sophisticated recyclable separation system, but it's still important that customers know what to place in the recycling carts. So what can be placed in the blue carts now include newspaper, cardboard, mixed paper, catalogs, magazines, and junk mail. Also, paper food containers such as milk jugs and juice boxes, clean plastic bottles, jugs, dairy, and dairy tubs. We do ask that the caps and lids be tossed because they're too small to go through the system. And also clean beverage containers, tin, steel cans, and scrap metal. So there are three important steps to community recycling success. The first starts at the curb with our customers. It's now convenient for everyone to put their items in the curb and, or put them in the cart and roll them out to the curb. As we mentioned, it's important that residents understand what to put in, what materials are okay to put in the carts. And this is done through the stickers on the carts, customer service inquiries, and annual updates that we put on our website. The city also has the same information on your website. Garden hoses, Christmas lights, tire chains, and plastic bags sometimes make it in the carts. This is because people want to recycle as much as possible and they mean well. Unfortunately, the wrong things placed in the carts can cause difficulty for our processing, hazards to our workers, and create added expense. So when in doubt, it's important to throw it out. Processing is the second important part of a successful recycling program. And what we process depends, and what we recycle depends on the location and the footprint of the material recovery facility that we build, the amount and sophistication of the equipment installed, the capability of the equipment and the personnel to identify and sort the materials in an expedient fashion. And end markets are a key. There needs to be a demand for the types of material we collect. There needs to be enough volume of materials to make the transportation and processing pencil and the manufacturer or remanufacturer needs to find value in the materials to make a new product out of the existing materials at an affordable cost. We would really like to invite council to visit our SMART facility in Spokane. It's not far away and happy to arrange that individually or as a group, so as you see fit, we can discuss that. Recycling is a great thing to do. It creates jobs, conserves natural resources, saves energy, saves water, reduces pollution, and reduces greenhouse gases. A couple of examples are, paper made from paper instead of the virgin fiber requires 70% less energy. The energy saved from one recycled aluminum can will light a 100-watt bulb for 20 hours. Waste Management is honored to receive many awards and accolades, and I'll just mention a few updates to this slide. Waste Management has been named by Ethosphere Institute as one of the world's most ethical companies eight years in a row, including this year. We are, the Corporate Responsibility Magazine has named Waste Management as a top 10 best corporate citizen. Waste Management has a focus on hiring veterans and has been named by GI Magazine as one of the top 100 employers for military. And with regard to sustainability, the Dow Jones Sustainability Indexes have Waste Management as the top waste and disposal company. Waste Management is also committed to recycling and committed to Coeur d'Alene. We've participated and sponsored many activities, events, and programs over the years. I have a list of over 15 of those such activities, some including Arts and Culture, City Parks and Downtown Concert Series, the Coeur d'Alene Downtown Association, Chamber of Commerce, the North Idaho Family Group, Education Information Center, Coeur d'Alene, Parks Day Celebration and Kids Day, the list goes on. Waste Management is pleased to be a longstanding community partner with Coeur d'Alene. So with that, with Waste Management, you have the assurance that we recycle what we collect. And I'm proud to be standing here telling you that. So at this point, I'm happy to have Mr. Roberg and Mr. Rang come up and answer any questions that you might have.
Council have any questions for either the two gentlemen or Tammy?
Oh, yeah.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, question came up at our public works meeting regarding what exactly we can put into the recycling bin because sometimes there's a little confusion and I don't want to have any doubt, I don't want to put something in there that can't be used. So pizza box, lids on plastic jugs and stuff, do you want us to like soak the label off them, do you want us to scrub them all out? I mean, what do you prefer?
Go ahead, Michael.
Those are great questions. And the pizza box, unfortunately, that is not an acceptable item simply because of the grease residue that gets into the cardboard, plus a lot of people leave food inside the box before they're contaminating the recyclables. Lids, we prefer, we prefer it off because if they come off in the recycling, they're too small, we can't capture them and they end up in the residue after processing. As far as labels on the outside of containers, those can stay on. Containers with food, just making sure they're cleaned out really well, maybe a quick rinse type scenario and they're all perfectly acceptable.
We heard there was, of course, some back and forth in the newspaper between you and I think Mr. Mello.
Here.
Hi, probably hear from you later. The question was in inland paper that there were bundles of recycled material from your SMART Center that they couldn't use. Do you want to address that?
I'm not sure where that misinformation came from because the SMART Center has not sold IEP inland empire paper, the newspaper we generate, because they in particular do not like single-stream newspaper. But as Tammy mentioned, we sell domestically 10 different mills in the Pacific Northwest that do like our quality of newspaper, cardboard, office pack, that type of material.
Having toured inland empire paper and learning about the processes with the single-stream, sometimes cardboard gets mixed in with the news. And if they ask requests for our loads, which they have on occasion asked for loads, they have to do extra processes at their facility because the cardboard can make their fine, bright paper darker, so that means they have to add more office pack and make more effort on their end. So they would prefer to buy elsewhere, but they do buy from us on, or have bought from us on occasion.
You do single-stream, can you explain what would be required if we went to whatever is not single-stream? I mean, there's obviously, it has a name, so there's something else besides single-stream and, what, multi-stream, double-stream?
Well, we had, we had the dual-stream program before. I mean, there are many separating items into separate bins. One is a different truck system. Added bins, more work and effort on citizens' parts, so, and as I presented earlier, our participation rate was 28% with that versus the single-stream. So the volume and the participation exponentially increase with the single-stream and then we take it out at the back end. And we do a really good, good job on the back end, so there are manufacturers that are buying our products.
Yeah, because I think that's a big concern, I know, is if we're going to go to the effort of putting stuff in the recycling bin, it's kind of nice, I mean, just to feel good about it, but it's also good to know that that's being put to use and it's not actually going to a landfill somewhere. Can you talk about glass for a second?
What would you like to know about glass?
Why don't we recycle glass?
Why don't we recycle glass? It wasn't in the initial program and it was not added as part of the single-stream program. It is certainly something we can look at doing. There are costs associated with doing that. It's hard on the collection trucks, it's hard on the equipment, but we do collect it in other areas and, you know, if that's something that council would like to explore, we're certainly willing to do that.
And that would go in the same bin, so you just put all your glass, your mayonnaise jars, whatever?
Correct.
Into that bin. And you're saying that your feeling is if we had to tell people, okay, we're going to go to multiple bins now, we're going to do a newspaper bin and a cardboard bin and a glass bin and a plastic bin, that you think the participation level would drop?
Significantly.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
Any other questions?
My only question was if the pizza box scenario happens and the, it contaminates the container that the pizza box was put in and picked up, does it contaminate the whole load or how does that work?
Regardless of any consuming mill, there are certain limits of contamination that they can tolerate. So if a pizza box got into one load of residential curbside recycling, it's not going to get caught in our system and it won't contaminate the overall product to the point where the end-consuming mill cannot use it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If no one has any other questions, I did want to do a follow-up because I was asked about recycling in the park and to see what we could do, not only to recycle in a park, but also if we have a special event, like the one last weekend with Art on the Green and Coeur d'Alene and other things, why, could we partner with you and have you guys put recycling bins out at those things? But then again, it came up that the recycling in the park might not be too effective, so what are your thoughts?
Oh, yeah, we definitely could. I've been talking to Bill Greenwood and we talked at the, at the Parks Day and we'd be more than willing to try to figure out a good scenario for recycling. We've got our carts, so we can figure out a lot of different things, definitely would partner with the city to make it work. I believe our carts would work well, but we could look at some other options, too. We actually just did Art in the Green, we had recycling down there with Citizens Council for the Arts and we also did recycling in the park with the Kiwanis. And we had like 10 yards of cardboard piled up and material, this, we picked it up on Monday, so.
Excellent.
And recycled, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me, Ron?
Yeah, I would just like to commend Waste Management for being a great supporter of Coeur d'Alene, in our recreation department, Iron Man, and all the other things that you mentioned on the screen there, that Waste Management has been a great supporter in many activities in Coeur d'Alene and I just hope you keep it up.
Thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on, Steve Anthony has a special presentation.
Mayor and council members, tonight, it's my pleasure, I've got a happy story for you tonight, and we have Tom Graff here from the Fire Department, too. Our softball program, we feel in Idaho is one of the largest ones. We've had close to 200 teams in our fall program and summer program, about 3,000 players, and we schedule close to 2,000 games. And with those many activities, we know that incidents will happen. While on July 15th, during one of our coed games, we had a citizen, a gentleman have a heart attack on Ramsey Five, but we were lucky to have a former emergency room nurse there and a fire captain there, who Heath Shepard can't be there, but tonight, we'd like to present Megan Greg with a plaque in recognition of saving a person's life. Megan, come up front, please. So I'd like to read this plaque, "In recognition of Megan Greg, your immediate actions and expertise were instrumental in saving the life of another. The city of Coeur d'Alene thanks you for your kindhardness and willingness to lend a hand." So I think her actions were very significant and we have the Fire Department to do a presentation and we also have family members here that would like to come up also and thank Megan. So, and Megan might say something at the end, too.
Thank you.
As a representative from the Fire Department who provides EMS in the city, we want to thank you for your actions. This is an amazing story. When you look at the numbers annually, we see roughly 400,000 people a year that experience sudden cardiac arrest out in the public and the survivability rate is less than 9%. So without bystanders doing actions like they did, you know, within five minutes of this occurring, we don't even have the capability to get there and do our care for these patients either. So her actions along with Heath Shepard, he's a division chief at Cootney Fire, that's what made it possible for us to get there, take the continuity of care and get the patient to the definitive care facility, which was Cootney Health, and have a very, very good outcome. And that's why we're here tonight, so we want to say thank you.
Thank you.
We have the family members here, too.
I'm Scott's sister-in-law and this is his sister. Megan has no idea what she did. Scott's only 52 years old and he ended up having six bypasses.
If it wasn't for her and other gentlemen, my brother wouldn't be here today.
Yeah.
He wouldn't have made it.
So we so appreciate what you did.
I can't thank you enough.
Good job, Megan, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the city of Coeur d'Alene Fire Department because really CPR is just keeping that brain alive until that defibrillator can get there, so having them respond quickly as well was awesome. The longest 10 minutes of my life. Get there, so, thank you as well for responding.
We want to thank you, too. We want to thank everybody that was there and did what they did.
I can't thank everybody enough for the prayers and everything they did for him. Because like I said, if it wasn't for them, he wouldn't be here today. They told me at the hospital, he would have never made it.
Great, thank you, Megan, great job.
So I kind of think, we say we have kind of a softball community and I see it shows how people look out for each other when they're out the fields. And again, on behalf, I think, of the city of Coeur d'Alene, the Recreation Department, Parks and Recreation Department, thank you again, Megan, great job, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar, who's going to do the duties tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of consent calendar, including setting the public hearings for V1513 Vacation of Portion of East Sherman and V1515 Vacation of Portion of Government Way. Also, Resolution 15036, Lease of Agreement with Fat Beam for Fiber, Dark Fiber, Mutual Assistance Compact with the City of Post Falls, and Memorandum of Agreement with Reneg LLP for the Plan Unit Development 404M2.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion?
I have three comments. The first one is regarding the vacation of the Portion of East Sherman right-of-way. I found out after public works that the design review team minutes didn't address the tree issue and urban forestry wasn't aware of the vacation and the engineer's report didn't include that, so I just wanted to ask that in the setting of the public hearing, we can direct staff to address the tree issue as that comes forward. And my second thing was a couple corrections to that really, really long continued council meeting we had on the budget hearings. One was that under the Electrical Engineering paragraph, a question was asked that, I had asked the question if the permit fees would have additional costs that would be passed on to the homeowner, developer, or contractor, and the answer to that was no. And I had also asked if the administrative assistant position for the electrical engineering position was directly tied to that position, and the answer to that was yes. And so if those can just be reflected as corrections in the minutes. And also, the library question was noted that the full-time position was dedicated specifically to the annex, which if that could be corrected, that it is not, the reference clerk is not dedicated specifically to the annex, it would be a shared duty position with assignments coming and going as the part-time positions are reorganized there. So, that's all I had.
Any other discussion items? Dan?
I just wanted to remind council that our number, Resolution 15036, Item C, was talked about a long time ago. It was a PUD out of Mill River and they came and talked to us about this to make sure that it was consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and that the CCNRs be adopted. And I checked with Hillary yesterday and that is the case, and that was a concern that we had at the time, but in the staff report, since it was so old, it happened so long ago, didn't actually list the specifics, but I did check on that. So that was something that we addressed a long time ago and all those issues that were, that were council's concerns have been addressed, so I wanted to say that. And also, Renata, do we need to make a motion to modify the minutes?
Normally, but Kiki and I talked earlier and she was okay with it just being noted under the discussion section of this set of minutes.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements, any member of the council have announcements tonight? Dan?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to talk about a couple issues that are kind of on the peripheral of what's going on in that I think council needs to pay a lot of attention as to what's going on with regards to downtown. And a couple of issues, there was the height restriction issue, which I brought up and went nowhere during the Hagadon vacancy, but there's also an issue, I think, regarding parking. And this came up at the Design Review Committee meeting in that there's this stuff about parking spaces that are required versus how a developer can go ahead and kind of horse-trade away some of the parking spaces. And I think it's a frustration that that committee is having and it's something we might want to address at the policy level regarding parking and increased densities. And I just wanted to bring that as a heads-up to council because I think it's something that may come up in the future. So just as a heads-up. And also, another issue with regards to downtown and parking is that we kind of don't have very many, if any, handicap spaces downtown. And I think that's another thing that we need to look at, which is, and I know I've brought this up to Troy before when we've talked about parking downtown, and I know it would be expensive because with parallel parking, to do handicap right, it's going to cost money because there has to be modifications done to the sidewalk, but I still think it's something that we can do. done to the sidewalk. But I still think it's something that we can do. You know, we're all pretty much able-bodied up here, and so oftentimes, we don't have that perspective when we're looking for a parking space, and we're thinking about getting close to where it is, so we don't have to walk far, but it doesn't hurt us to walk. So I think it would be something to consider. Definitely, in the old days, a long time ago, I remember there being handicap parking spaces downtown. I know that because of ADA now, there are requirements that handicap spaces have an access to one side, and I think that's something else that council should consider looking at in the future. Thank you.
Mike, on what Dan was talking about, the fee for developers, that's a fee in lieu of, as far as parking goes. That was a, I know Warren's our planning expert here, but that's a situation where, for a monetary amount, the developer can pay a fee in lieu of parking spaces. Maybe just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, that's correct. And Mr. Timison can correct me, but I think the money, then, is dedicated to creating other parking opportunities in the downtown area. So you don't put it in your building, but you pay a fee that goes to developing other common use or other parking areas.
And the fee is substantial, right? It's...
$10,000 a car park?
Yeah, right. So, and that was, Jim?
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. So anyway, that's the only question that I had, was that there is a fee for that in lieu of parking?
Your Honor, with regard to Councilman Gookin's other concern, Planning and Zoning and the Design Review Board are going to have a joint meeting to discuss some of those issues. Director Anderson of Planning and Zoning is setting that meeting up.
Thank you. Any other councilperson have anything tonight? Okay, we'll move on to other business. Resolution 15-037, this is setting the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and scheduling a public hearing for September 1st of 2015. Staff report by Troy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you. We are getting closer to the end of our fiscal year, so we're getting prepared for the next fiscal year. This process is a culmination of work by your department heads after we met with you and did strategic planning. We then brought you back together to take a look at the work that the staff had put on paper, and you then challenged us, again, to continue to whittle away at it. We are proposing that you set the high-water mark for the public hearing at $86,31,659, and I will show you where it is that we made movement since we got together. Probably the biggest number for us this evening is the fact that we are seeking a 1.75% increase in property tax revenue from the existing tax base. You were kind enough to let us whittle away 1% since we last saw you. Is that a good way to phrase that? This is what the City of Coeur d'Alene has taken in taxes since 2009. If we do not take the increase, which is a maximum of 3%, from what we'd taken the year before, it goes into a fiduciary account that really doesn't have any money. We call it foregone taxes. If you move forward with a 1.75% increase, our foregone balance will increase, even though it's not real money, it's actually taxing authority that you could use someday in the future. Our average, should we go forward with the 1.75, is 3/4 of 1% over that many years. We are able to keep cash on hand to cover the city during those months when we're looking for property tax revenues. We get property taxes twice a year. You have approximately $6.1 million in your fund balance. That's running about 14.5% of your general fund expenses plus the library. The Government Finance Officers Association would share with you that that is a satisfactory number. They look at anything above two months' worth of cash flow in your general fund as good coverage. Really, really good year in new construction. We are proposing in this financial plan that you take all these dollars from new construction. We are moving out of the recession. We have new growth, and this is really, really positive news, that we can take $827,349. The reason you're getting this information today is we were just getting those numbers in today as we firm up things from the county. The county was very, very, very close on this number. Since we last met, we have modified the personnel expenses.
Troy, can we go back to that again? What was the difference between the guestimate that you used for, before we had the county, and the final number from the county? Do you have that with you?
$10,000.
Really? Wow. Thank you.
County does a very good job. We have had to do some trimming since the last time we got together. I have never brought forward in 16 years an increase in full-time equivalents of over 23. We've never even been close to that. We are proposing, in this financial plan, that you hire six new police officers. Thanks to the challenge that you allowed us to reduce the income stream, we are proposing that these six not be hired all at the same time, but we stagger them in. We took $100,000 savings in that one category. We are proposing to bring on firefighters late in this fiscal year. We are looking at a half-time civilian report taker, animal safety officer, code enforcement. Street Department has a reorganization that you've been looking at for a number of months. We have an electrical inspector in this plan. Along with that is the building permit coordinator that Councilmember Miller just spoke of. And we have taken your input, worked with the water department, and left one admin support. And thus, you see the two utility workers in water that we have eradicated from this plan, the half-time criminal prevention position in our police department, and one fire division chief. This is the numbers we just got in. City of Coeur d'Alene had a good year. We didn't quite get to $3.3 billion. That's what I was forecasting, so I missed it. Cootney County's up over $13 billion in valuation, and you see what we did year over year, see what the county did year over year. And as we had anticipated, and as we had forecast, and as we've been working on for the last month, for sure, we are proposing to you that if you take a 1.75% increase in property tax revenue, take the new growth, we will lower the levy rate in the City of Coeur d'Alene, for the City of Coeur d'Alene. How does that happen? That happens because the valuation has gone up, and it happens because we are saving some pretty significant money. We'll show you in just a minute. Why can we show you so many full-time equivalents, which are ongoing expenses? New growth is number one. Number two is the increase in the tax on our fuel. We also anticipate a good sales tax revenue going forward, and liquor tax revenue, the firefighter retirement fund. We will see that reduction in our costs. You have moved forward with an organization, reorganization, excuse me, that is saving the city dollars, and the property tax increase of 1.75%.
Troy, can you remind me again, new growth, every year, it's from new growth. It's new tax base. It's new valuation. One-time money.
Ongoing money, sir.
Ongoing.
Yes.
Okay.
We wouldn't do this with one-time money for very long, so it's ongoing. We have a large increase year over year. A big chunk of that is your voter-approved general obligation bond for public safety. You also have some good things going on in water and wastewater. Obviously, we've trimmed this from the last time you looked at it. So, these are the big numbers that moved up the city's budget by $11 million, $5 million of which is a public voted-upon general obligation bond. Thank you, public. $1.2 million in a brand-new fire station in the northwest quadrant of your community. That is being paid for by development impact fees. Health insurance is an increase. Cost of living is an increase. Marriage increases, and over $1 million in those new positions in your financial plan.
Troy, did we have to contact with the labor unions and associations to adjust that health insurance? Did we have to go back and look at their contracts at all?
We are in that process. In this particular program, this is all about the 7.5% increase that the city is going to take on.
Okay.
So we'll do a couple of quick analysis, now that we know what the levy rate would be. If your home was valued at $190,000 in the City of Coeur d'Alene, and you had the full homeowner's exemption, which this one does, your taxable value would be $100,420. A year ago, you would pay to the City of Coeur d'Alene $648.71. This year, if the valuation has not changed, your property taxes would go down to $634.65 for the year. A little example here as well, and again, when the levy rate goes down, depending on what your valuation does, the property taxes may go down. Since our last get-together, you allowed us to shave off $187,947, council members and mayor. We're getting dangerously close on cash flow based on adding all these people. I could not pull it off, so I went with recommendations, talked to department heads. I would say I have a police chief that's not my biggest fan, and I definitely have a fire chief that's not. So that is part of what you challenged me to do. We have worked with your water fund extensively. Look at all the changes we've made. Most of this is to shore up their cash position and stretch out projects as they have large, large-dollar amounts that they can do over time. So we're not budgeting them all in this fiscal year. The other big ones we've been working on the last 30 days is the fact that we had not anticipated quite the positive rate that we received on the general obligation bond for the public safety. At the same time, that lender allowed us to go back in and redo the 10-year amortization on the library that was a voter-approved bond, and we are lowering the debt service significantly. So that also has a positive impact on the levy rate, because we're paying less interest and we have less dollars in principle that our constituents are going to help us out So the fire division chief obviously had a savings, removing the part-time police crime prevention specialist. Again, staggered the hiring of the police officers. I believe that's a great way to do it. You can tell me if you disagree. And then the movement in the water fund, so as to get the projects that match up more directly, push off a couple of other projects, and simultaneously look to build up cash in that fund.
Troy, the fire division, the fire chief, that is not a full-year amount, right?
It was not a full-year, correct.
Okay.
So again, we worked primarily in the water fund. We had a minor change in the drainage fund, and a decrease in debt service for your general obligation bonds of over a So thank you for having a very, very financeable city, so that we could bring in that type of a savings due to the strength of the voters and the financials that you represent. So this has a public hearing on it. We are open to questions.
Questions for Troy. Ron?
Yeah, Troy, you've got to stagger the hiring of new police officers. When you say staggered, how staggered?
How staggered? We will slow down that police chief to the point that it works. So in other words, he probably can't bring all of them on at the same time. It would create a burden. So we will work with him to make, it depends on what he gets for laterals and all those other variables. But at the end of the year, he could have all six of those FTE up and running. I need to save that $100,000, so we could either hire them early and then wait, or hire them slower and then do it later in the year.
Kiki?
Troy, on the eliminated positions, it says two utility workers, and then on this, it says remove one utility worker in the water fund. So what's, where's the other utility worker?
So we have one in here, and we're going to take one more out. How about that for an answer? So we are, it was administratively and through the water department and with finance, and as we were doing that, we didn't capture the second one in this plan. So we will go to two, so as to save some dollars, so that we can always give you a lower number on the first day of September 2015 than where we're at today. Good catch.
Steve? I guess we'll just keep it going right on down the line here. I'm sure these other three have some questions as well. Troy, I'd met with yourself, Mr. Hammond and Mr. Mayor yesterday, and expressed some concerns, presented some ideas. One of the things we talked about was the fund balance at the 14.5%. You had previously said that, that when lenders are looking at fund balance, they like to see double digits, and we talked about how the difference between 10% or 14.5% would reflect on rates from a lender. Would you like to speak to that again, please, a little bit? And, you know, your insight on what that, you know, 4.5% might have, might have been to this most recent deal on the bond?
Knowing a little bit about lending from a previous career, the cash that an organization on hand is a significant strength when you analyze the probability of repayment and timely repayment. So that cash on hand shows that you have been great stewards of the city's resources. You have a very large liability out here in what we do. You happen to have people that carry guns and go into burning buildings. So we have gigantic potential expenses. We are fully insured, but there's still deductibles and all those other things that can get in the way. I would say to you that you are at least 40 basis points better than what we were positively anticipating, and it could have been, I would almost give you, 8/10 of 1%. Was because your financials were solid and your voters came out and supported it. Had we been down at 10%, now your risk goes up, because we don't have as much cash to cover that rainy day when something goes awry, or we don't have enough cash to cover our payroll in the month of November and December when we're looking for that tax check. We don't have to do tax anticipation notes. The other thing that that cash has allowed us to do is we just went through one of the greatest recessions since the Great Depression, and we did not borrow a nickel to keep your organization funded, didn't go into debt, didn't have any layoffs, and were able to operate on that. So I think, as a finance director, you have looked at your one-time expenses, used cash to take care of that, and have a cash flow that will cover your ongoing expenses.
Good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, so the cuts that you made from the budget, preliminary budget presented to us at the workshop, and today, we're all employees?
In the general fund, to move it to 1.75, it was all wages, correct?
Wages. Hypothetical question. So, at the end of the year, there's over-unders for each of the budgeted items. If there's a surplus of money in that, say, you know, the department did not spend as much money as they were budgeted, does that amount then go into fund balance?
Yes, sir.
So that's how the fund balance pretty much grows, is unspent funds?
Absolutely. Councilmembers, you have no contingency in an $80 million budget. Most organizations would be very concerned about that. Our way in which to cover the contingency tends to be the fact that we do not run at 100% of the employees in this plan every day of the year. Every time we have an opening, there's savings that come to the city. That would be our contingency, since, you know, well over 3/4 of the general fund's expenses, probably not quite this year, because we have so much in the general obligation bond, is in personnel. So that is where our contingency comes in.
If council would like to make further cuts to this budget to help reduce the property tax burden, we could do that at the hearing, whenever that is, September 1. Is that when that we do the hearing?
That is correct.
So we could offer and say we would like to do, I know we're having a meeting coming up about the electrical inspector, so, and whether or not that affects anything, I don't know, because I don't have all the information on that. But if, say, we saw something in there that we thought could use further cutting, we can go ahead and offer that up at that time? I just want, I just want to let the public know that this is, we're not setting something in stone here.
No.
Okay.
And it never goes in stone, because it always changes the next day, so we don't put this in stone at all.
Thank you. No stone in the financial department. Thank you.
Woody?
Well, I...
Woody?
Well, I've been sit through a lot of these, and it's still, it's just amazing me that we're hiring 23, 26 people. It just, it's way over my head. I get it. I think it's wonderful that we can do it. It's just, we've been so lean for so long that it, it just, it's just awkward. Ron, you know, you've been here. It's been rather interesting times for the last eight or nine years. And this is great. You know, this is going to work, and my taxes are going down. I can't believe I'm going to get six more policemen, nine more firemen, and my taxes go down. Damn. That's pretty good, you know? So thanks, Troy, and all you guys for kind of picking through it. Mayor, I know you were, didn't want to even raise taxes, right? So, no, this is, this is good. And I think we're covering all the bases. We're covering fire and police and, and all those little odds and ends of things. So I'm proud of it, you know? It's, it feels good to be sitting up here, taxes going down, and we're getting a bunch more public safety. So I don't think it gets any better than that. And I thank you.
You're very welcome. It's, I hope it feels good sitting up there. And these are the positive changes that allowed that. And that debt restructuring, wow, half a million dollars is, I would hope that's why you came here to be elected and help your constituents and then deliver all those services. You're welcome.
Amy?
And I have one quick question. Well, first, thank you for all your work on this. Can you remind me, Chief Gabriel's not here, on the division chief position? My, my mind is not remembering, you know?
This position was tied to being the emergency medical services chief.
That's right.
Right now, we're splitting those duties. As we add more staff, as you well know, 75% of their calls are medical anymore. And so that was the area that we need to beef up. It's also appears in the Cootney County Emergency Medical Services contract. So we need to look at that. That is one that is unfinished business, I would suggest to you as we come out of this plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Troy on this? I guess one, one thing is that I would like to echo what the other, the council people say is that there's a lot of work that was done into this budget. Great job by Vani and Troy and all the rest of the staff. I know there were dozens upon dozens of hours of meetings that everyone went through to get to this point. And so I, like the other council members, are very proud of, of this budget and really what, what is our number one task, which is public safety. And we're addressing that, and we're addressing it very well, and we're doing it with the taxpayer in mind. So I think that's a great job. Just looking forward, just a little bit of a reminder, we, we have nine firefighters that we're just funding partially this year. We have six police officers that we're just funding, funding partially. I know Vani's cringing there because she's just finishing this budget, but we have to have a little bit of an eye to next year because that's going to be a year that will be just as challenging as this year. And I'm sure that we will come, be here a year from now with, with some good news too, because those are our positions that we are going to have to fund for the full year. And I know that you guys plan and forecast ahead, and I know that we'll be in good shape this time next year as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to pass resolution 15037, setting preliminary budget for fiscal year 2015-16.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gukin?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Troy and Vani. Great job again. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to come up and address some city business, come on up.
Hi, my name is Barb Trumpacker, and I just have a concern about the parking situation on East Lakeshore. I believe the city paid some 60, 65,000 for, to buy the 12th Street portion of the beach. And there seems to be a lack of parking there. And whereas on the south side of East Lakeshore, between 12th and 15th, parking is allowed all the way along there, but between 11th and 12th, it isn't. And I would just ask, request that the mayor and the council take a look at that and see if maybe that could be changed so that we could have parking there. It's heavily used beach and for many different forms of water recreation and sunning and so forth. And I think it would be to the public's advantage if we could have that parking along there.
Where's your area of concern again?
Between 11th and 12th Street on the south side of East Lakeshore.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to address this.
Yeah.
I serve on parking commission, and we just came out of parking commission a couple hours ago, and this was a topic of conversation. And I'm going to refer to Troy to help me out. But my understanding is, is those five to six spots that you're referring to between 11th and 12th have been no parking for several years. And the purpose of that is for emergency vehicles to be able to access that portion of the beach. New signage was just put in place because the previous signage may not have been adequate there. And so it's raising a lot of questions and confusion because it is somewhat new. It's more visible. And so it was a topic of conversation, but it's really important that our safety personnel can get to that beach whenever needed. And Troy, you can elaborate further on that.
Thank you. And we have been in contact on this very subject, yes. So there's also the 11th Street Marina that now houses the fireboat. And that is the other area that we need to get to in the event that there is an emergency. So that has been a worked-out relationship. New signage has triggered a whole bunch of energy, and we actually have shortened up the number of car parks down there, removed a emergency vehicle sign that was east of the inlet into the beach so that people can now park right in front of that as well. So if you'd look at the parking for me, give me a holler back and see if it makes more sense. But that has been that way for a number of years. It just hasn't been as obvious.
Yeah. It, well, there's always been, people have always been able to park along there, and there's been no ticketing of it so, or anything. But as far as the emergency thing, that's always, we've always understood it because the curbing goes down right at 12th Street that the emergency parking would be there. But now it's almost always taken up with the paddleboard and the kayak vendors. They're parked in the emergency spot. There were, so that's...
And my understanding of that, and again, Troy, I'll defer to you, is that's not allowed. It does need to stay free for emergency vehicles. So...
But it never does. Every day, every day, every day.
Well, that's noted, I'm sure. So, so, thank you. Thank you for that feedback. And please continue to, you know, reach out to us and to Troy.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor and council, Greg Johnson, Midtown Matters Group, coming here with an update or lack of update with the Midtown proposed project on 4th Street. We have, we've had, we've gone, I've brought, you know, the flyers, the door-to-door flyers, and our meetings got a little bigger. And, and we've had probably three meetings with LCDC, their regular staff meetings and whatnot, and no progress. It's, we've been told it's been stalled. And so I would say that the frustration level of my Midtown group is high. And it, just, just looking at LCDC or Ignite CDA with their new, new change of logo and whatnot, the amount of time and money that's been spent on that to show the public what they've done. And we've gone on well over 10 years of this project, on again, off again, and trying to put that round peg in a square hole with the housing company. And just coming here to, if anyone's watching on Channel 19 and, and bringing you guys up to date of the frustration of what's going on in that community, and that we truly want to work with Ignite CDA, there just seems to, from our perception, there's been a dragging of the heels to move another, move into another direction with another project or other, other developers that would like to get in there. So, and as, as I've seen this, there seems to be a lot of taxpayers' dollars spent on an image and on, on what they've done than spending more time on this particular project. And I know it's passionate to me or important to me, and, and that might be skewing that a little bit. But it, like I said, it's been well over 10 years of that neighborhood looking and being the way it is. And it's come slowly. But they're holding on to a giant chunk of potential there, and it's just kind of been strangled. So again, just putting it out there, whoever watches Channel 19 and comes, come to these, is that we do still have our meetings at 6:30 at Kelly's Bar and Grill on 4th for any input for there. And we will continue to be the squeaky wheel to make something happen for, for Midtown. So, thank you.
So Greg, you meet, you said 6:30 at Kelly's, which day?
6:30, Kelly's removed it from 5:30 to 6:30. So 6:30 in the back area. There can be as many as 15. There can be as few as four. But it's every, every Monday, and to get feedback from the neighborhood and, and what's going on. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Come on up.
The next squeaky wheel. Hi, my name is Ben Mello, and I'm the person who brought their contingent from Waste Management here. Thank you for the presentation. It was wonderful. Very tailored to Coeur d'Alene. Conversation I've had with you, Councilman Gukin, online, and I see that you responded to the press article called "Tarnished Trash," where the information that I got from you was you had received that from the city Parks Department, Park Superintendent, and officials from Waste Management, that the bins at McEwen were not long longer being used because of, and I quote, "They're more trouble than they're worth." Apparently putting items in these compactors that jammed the mechanism. So my first question or comment is, are those bins actually being used? And I don't know if the city Parks Department person is here, or if the officials in Waste Management know this, but is that information true? Because that's what spurred part of my discussion on my newspaper opinion piece. The second item I'd like to, so I, I know I only have two minutes, so I'd like to get to my second point as well. The information was there, the question was asked, who from Inland Empire told me or Adrian Crombaugh with KEA that the, what bales of paper were in the back of their warehouse? And it was the manager at Inland Paper Company. And I have an email record from Adrian, the KEA director, I'm on their board, stating that. And I can share that with whoever. It's our, our knowledge. And I can give, Adrian's unfortunately not able to be here, but she would say, say things. She was at the warehouse and had the, had the tour given to her. So, you know, it seemed like the newspaper article came out to discredit what I was presenting. And I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight to talk about this because I'm passionate about, if we're going to have an image, let's, let's do what we're supposed to be doing, which is recycling. And, and making sure that material is being used locally. So with that, if I can hear from our city folks, either the city superintendent or officials from Waste Management about whether or not those trash, trash compactors in the park are being used, that'd be great.
I think what we, if we have the contact information, then we can get those answers right back to you. I don't have the answers right tonight, but Dan?
Yes. Wow. Thank you, Ben, for showing up. Yeah, I was just told by, by Bill Greenwood in the, at Parks Day that, you know, they'll pull, apparently those recycling bins are pretty deep. And they'll pull it up with a, with a crane, and they look at the contents because it's a clear bag, and they see things in there that it's like, okay, that's not recyclable, which means they just take them to the transfer station. And that happens a lot. But a question, I was on the phone with Adrian this afternoon. What do you think that KEA could do if we wanted to partner with a city with information to help people understand how to recycle? Because I, I think that's the issue in the park. I don't know. What do you think?
We would love to do that. KEA would, would love to, you know, up in Sandpoint, they have the festival up there, the music festival, where they actually have containers where people are being told what to put in and what not to put in. We would love to work with the city 2030, Division 2030 folks to try to come up with it. Because I know that, and I know I'm out of time, but that glass recycling is a big thing. It's one of the high issues in Division 2030. And if I understood correctly, if we were to implement glass recycling here, that the numbers of participation would go down. That's quite contrary to what I've heard from a majority of people that I've run into. They want glass recycling as part of 2030. But specific to KEA, I can't speak directly for them. I'm not a spokesperson for them, but I am on the board. But we would love to help set up some volunteering efforts to make sure people are aware of what they should be putting in these compactors and not putting in those compactors.
Yeah, because I think if people just understood, like, you saw even questions from council about, you know, what is recyclable, what isn't? I mean, it's kind of, I know they put the stickers on the, on the bins, and it says, do this, don't that. But still, there's, there's, I think people sometimes have a little trouble. I know my kids sometimes will put something in the trash, and I'll be like, no, you can recycle that. The red solo cup, you can recycle that. So if there's something that KEA could do to maybe an informational campaign or get together perhaps with Waste Management and see if there's something that we could do to encourage people to use that? I mean, I, I'd like to see that. I know there's a lot of people who don't care, but I tend to be someone who's more into that. I don't want to keep filling up the landfill. If we can reuse this stuff, let's reuse it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One quick thing. I wanted to clear this up. I understood from Waste Management that they didn't say the reduction in recycling would happen if glass was included. They said the reduction would happen if we went to dual-stream recycling, but there would be an associated cost if glass, and it might be nominal enough that people would be willing to pay for it. I don't know. But, but there was an associated cost to add glass. Is that right? Yes? Okay, good. I just want to make sure that it wasn't. Good.
Thank you. And I think that the folks from Waste Management had indicated that they're, they're certainly willing to, to do more and work more on recycling. And maybe we can work in partnership and do, always do a better job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment?
Mr. Mayor and council, Stephen Roberg, 6488 North 4th Street in Dalton Gardens, Idaho. And so, yes, definitely we would be willing to talk with KEA and increase our recycling and see what we can do about that. In fact, we'd be willing to offer them a tour of our facility too, the Smart Center, so they could see all the work that goes into recycling. So just to rebuttal a little bit about the IEP, we, Inland Empire Paper, we actually, when we heard about that, we checked with all the managers over there. And that material was not Waste Management. Bales of paper, just letting you know, we had never disposed of them. So it wasn't to discredit Mr. Mello. We were just trying to make sure he, it sounded like he had incorrect information from that manager. So we wanted to make sure and set the record straight for you. It makes absolutely no sense to dispose of it because after we bale it and everything, we would find another market for it at another mill instead of throwing it away, if that makes sense. So, so I wanted to make sure that you, that you knew that. So I think you do. So, and so, yeah, we would definitely work with anybody to make sure increased recycling. Councilman Gukin, again, you know, we will work with Bill Greenwood and the city to increase recycling. It's very important. And we really, really love to recycle. It makes a lot more sense than, than throwing away materials. So, so we're willing to meet with the city on any other type of recycling you would like to do. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wishing for public comments tonight? Okay, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second?
Second, okay.
I wanted to hold my breath here.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned.